All right. Meeting of the Somerville Planning Board for March 13th, 2024, please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided. Copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was published in the newspaper on March 13th, 2024, given to the clerk administrator and posted on the outside of Borough Hall. Roll call.
Chairman Novato?
Here.
Ms. Rosensky?
Here.
Mayor Gallagher?
Here.
Councilman Vroom?
Here.
Ms. Adair?
Here.
Ms. Warner?
Here.
Mr. Kraska?
Here.
Mr. Crestes?
Here.
Mr. Cleveland?
Here.
Mr. Addick?
Here.
Ms. Reikens?
Here.
Okay, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes for February 28th for the regular meeting?
So moved.
Any additions or corrections? Whenever you're ready, Jenna.
Chairman Novato?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yeah.
Ms. Warner?
Abstain.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Crestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, approval of the minutes for executive session for February 28th?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Okay.
Chairman Novato?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
I'm abstaining.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yeah.
Ms. Warner?
Abstain.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Crestes?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Okay, our only application for tonight is the Foundry Holdings LLC application. Before you start, I just want to tell everybody what the procedure's going to be for tonight. We're going to let the applicant provide all of their professional testimony, and the board will ask questions, and then we'll go through our professional reports, the board's professional reports, and then I will open it up to the public for questions or comments. Okay, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, I just want to note for the record that there are three members of the board that were not present at the first hearing on August 23rd, 2023. Those are Ms. Rosensky, Ms. Adair, and Mayor Gallagher. All three have certified that they've listened to the tapes of that meeting and they will be qualified to vote this evening. She may get to that point.
Thank you. Good? Whenever you're ready.
Red. Red means go.
Red means on.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good to be back here before the board. Rob Simon from Herald Law here on behalf of the applicant. As this board is aware, the applicant has filed its application for preliminary final site plan approval and any necessary relief, whether it's variance, exception, a redevelopment plan, deviation relief regarding the property 50 James Street in Somerville, Block 50, Lot 2, and also 82 Fairview Avenue, Somerville, Block 50, Lot 2.01. As this board is aware, this property has previously been declared as an area in need of redevelopment in accordance with the local redevelopment and housing laws of the state of New Jersey, and it is located in the Burrows R3 zone as a redevelopment overlay zone as part of the Kirby Avenue redevelopment area and is subject to the Burrows Kirby Avenue Redevelopment Plan, most recently amended on or about June 5th of 2023. So the application before you contemplates a 112-unit housing development, 51-bedroom units and 62 two-bedroom units consisting of two four-story buildings with parking, both surface parking as well as underground parking. No variances, we believe, are required with regard to this application. We'll get into that, of course, through the testimony, but just as one point of clarification, Mr. Cole raised an issue as to a need for a variance for a fence, a six-foot fence, and talked to the applicant, and we're going to reduce the height of that fence to four feet so that it complies with the ordinance. So we have this evening testimony from our experts that previously provided testimony with regard to this application. Dave Stires, our professional engineer, John Sorocco, licensed architect, and Gary Dean, our traffic and professional planning consultants, consultant, excuse me, to address the plan revisions submitted since the last hearing, including any relief that remains to be required of the board, for this board's approval. And we're also, of course, through the testimony, going to address the review letters, Mike Cole's letter of March 5th, 2024, to the board, as well as the fire marshal's letter, most recently dated, March 11th, 2024, to the board. And that's going to be followed by some brief comments from the principal of the applicant, Greg Storms. We are in need of certain redevelopment plan deviation relief. We'll get into that through the course of the presentation, whether it's for the number of driveways, width of driveway, some lighting issue as to type of roof that we're proposing, and the like. But we'll address that, obviously, through the testimony that's going to be presented. And, of course, we additionally request any other variance, exceptions, interpretations, waivers, et cetera, that may be required through the course of our presentation. So with that, I'd like to start by calling Dave Stires to testify. And I think we're all set in terms of exhibits. So what exhibit, Kara, are we up to at this point?
Yeah, so what I'd like to do, since I wasn't at the first hearing, I just want to go back and mark some of the typical exhibits that you marked. A1, I understand, was marked at the first hearing. That would be colored site plan. We'll mark as A2, the application and all supporting documents that have a submitted connection with the application to date. A3 will be a copy of the original notice of publication as well as the updated notice of publication. A4 will be the March 6th, 2024, letter from the Fire Prevention Bureau. As A4, A5 will be the March 7th, 2024, letter from the same Bureau. A6 is the March 11th, 2024, letter, again, the same Bureau. A7, Mike Cole's review letter dated July 16, 2023. A8, Mike's letter dated September 19, 2023. And A9, Mike's most recent letter dated March 5th, 2023. So that brings us up to, I mean, typically, if the applicant's marking exhibits, we mark them as PBs, so you can do PB1.
However you want us to proceed, we'll be happy to.
I'm sorry, A, you know what, I just screwed up. Let's just keep going. Just go with, right now, we'll be at A9.
So A9, A9 is Mike's letter, right?
A9 is Mike's letter, A10, yeah.
Okay.
Keep going with the A10.
So with that, and just for clarification, Mr. Stires was previously sworn at the prior hearing, and he remains as duly sworn. So, Mr. Stires, good evening.
Good evening.
And you remain familiar with the site plan and related application material submitted as part of this application, correct?
I do, yes.
Okay, and you still remain familiar with the property and the surrounding area?
Yes, I do.
So do you have any exhibits that you want to mark?
I have a revised site plan, which is like a composite of the landscaping and layout. So it's one-of-one. It's entitled Rendering Site Plan. It is a site plan that's provided to the board, and it has a date of base 16, 2023.
If that's the final revision date?
Well, no, so it's a May 16, 2023, but clearly it has to be revised.
Revised on February 9, 2024.
Thank you.
I was making that.
Correct.
Dave, I'm going to interrupt you for just one minute. Jenna, can you focus on that? Focus the camera on that. Dave, can you turn it just a little bit?
This way?
Just move it over to the left.
I'll jog it over.
Yes, move to the table with it.
That way everybody in the audience can see it.
There you go, that's good.
Thank you.
So, Dave, referring to A10 that you marked with the last revision date of February 9th, 2024, why don't you give the board a little bit of a background as to where we started from and where we are today in terms of this project? Yep, take your time.
So originally, the site plan, so we had comments that we took to heart from the
Can you swing the mic over that? No, that, the...
You want this one?
Yeah, swing that over to...
So we were here before the board back in August of 2023. We had public comments relative to the building and how close it was to Fairview Avenue. And we had some comments relative to outstanding open items relative to fire officials' comments. And also Larry had brought up some landscape being within the parking areas to cool the cars down. So we took those into consideration in our redevelopment, or redesign. And what we have before you is, and also, we had a couple items that came up between August and now, and it was prior to a scheduled public hearing where Mike Cole had introduced a couple of new variances that we didn't really foresee. One that created a rear yard on the western property line, which is a sideline, you know, if you look at the site plan, but it's technically a rear yard. And that variance required a shift from the western property line to 35 feet. The minimum rear yard setback is 35. We had currently, we had previously had it at 16.8 feet. And then, in addition to that, the front yard on James Street was about 10 feet off, and we shifted that to 20 feet, which is the required front yard setback in the redevelopment zone. So we shifted Fairview to 40, James to 20, and the western property line to 35 feet. So we kind of shrunk the building footprint inward. And the other thing we did to create the space to allow that to happen is we created two garages, one in each building, that hold 50 cars. So there's a total of 100 cars that are under the building. And that allowed us to reduce the parking south of the two buildings and shift the building back and allow for that design to happen. And in doing so, one of the advantages is that we significantly reduced the impervious coverage from the existing, we reduced it from the last design, and by doing so, we've eliminated the stormwater management and still have a reduction in runoff from the site. And we've gone back and forth with DEP and Mike Cole and ironed all those issues out. And so that's, you know, the other thing that's allowed us to do is, as you come out of that driveway between the two buildings, there was an issue about light glare. So we bermed up that, what used to be a detention basin in that ring road, to a, it's a nice soft berm with significant landscaping. So that will shield the properties to the north of Fairview Avenue. So that basically is our design changes with respect to the new plan that we're presenting today.
Just if you could just maybe walk through, just again, because it's been a while, Dave, just the general layout of the buildings.
Sure, so this thing doesn't have a word for it. So we got Fairview Avenue on the top of the page on the north side of the subject property. We have a one-way end on the west side and an exit on the east side of the ring road. And that ring road feeds the parking in the rear. There's about, I believe it's 121 surface parking spaces, and then we have the ramp to the western building here with 50 parking spaces under that building, and the ramp to the eastern building here with additional 50 parking spaces. We did have surface parking in front of the building on each side. That was considered a variance. And so now we just have a concrete area for drop-off and deliveries for each building. So we've eliminated that parking variance in the front of the building.
And you heard my introductory remarks, which included my statement that the proposed fence in the determined front yard along James Street is going to be reduced from six feet to four feet, obviating the need for any type of variance roof.
Yeah, the public right-of-way ends roughly in here, and that fence from that point forward will be four feet and not five feet, or not six feet.
So with the plan revisions, can you just identify the relief that still remains to be granted by the board, the non-variance roof? We can start maybe with the driveway.
So there's a maximum of one driveway allowed for the residential properties. And as I testified previously, and this came out in the redevelopment review by the redevelopment committee, we had proposed a two-way drive in this location. And we were, it was, there was a suggestion by the committee to make that one way. So we made that one way. We kept it 25 initially for emergency services in the last site plan, and we reviewed the fire apparatus and have reduced that down to 20 feet. So it's a 20-foot one-way configuration there. And we would request the design waiver, and I think that, you know, from my recollection, recollection, the board was okay with that request at the last hearing.
And the requirement in the ordinance states that the one-way drive can't be greater than 15 feet, and if we're proposing 20?
That's correct.
And I believe there was also an issue raised about footcandle measurements for minimum elimination levels?
Yes, and the way the plan is presented, it's a very low intensity. I think the footcandle average on this design is just under one footcandle for the entire parking areas. And Mike Cole had brought up that the intensities are less than .3 in certain areas, and that actually happens in the right-of-way. So it's off the property, you know, our lighting expert designed it to light up the driveways and the parking areas. And as you leave the property and enter Fairview, the lights from this design go down below the .3. But what I can say to this board is, there's lights in Fairview Avenue, and at the exit in particular, there's a light within close proximity on the north side of Fairview that will address that intersection. So we believe we're compliant in that, and if we're not, we will make it compliant.
And I'd like to to mention, or ask you, with regard to the driveways, I'm assuming that increasing the width of driveways helps to promote emergency access as well?
Yes, if we reduced it any further, then we'd have issues with the turning movements that were provided to us from the fire official.
And there's also a comment as to the need for relief, redevelopment plan design deviation relief due to the project containing flat roofs or a flat roof. You're going to have Mr. Sorocco, the architect, and Mr. Dune, the planner, is going to address that?
Yes.
So I think, is there any other, based on your review as an engineer, are there any other items that you believe require relief from this board, specific relief, other than our general request for immediate file of site?
I do not.
So at this point, what I'm going to ask you to do, starting with Mike Cole's letter of March 5th, 2024, which has been marked as A9, is to go through it, and you don't have to go through certainly all the items, and just so the board's aware, unless we specifically refer to an item for clarification or comment purposes, the applicant is prepared to comply with the requests that are contained in Mr. Cole's March 5th, 2024, letter that has been marked as A9. But there are a number of things that I think that Mr. Cole has asked us to provide, you know, certainly some comments on, there were some questions, and we believe it's appropriate to address certain of those items that are contained in the letter. So, Mr. Stires, I'm going to ask you, just pull the letter out for a second. You want to start at what page?
Page, under Parking and Circulation, page 11, item number 3.
Okay, hold on a second.
And I think, Mike, you talked to George about this. There are 24 EV charging stations shown on the plant, future charging stations, and I think you had indicated 21. So we believe we're compliant. Item number 11 on page 12, the plan does conform. We have 14 feet to the stop bar. Just, that's just a comment. On page 13, we had a meeting with Bob...
Wait, 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 you say page 13?
Page 13, item 12.
Okay.
We had a discussion with Bob Lynn on Friday, and...
And Bob Lynn is who?
He's the fire official. And we indicated to him that there are turning movements available from the main drive into, come on. There we go, into the drive aisles, both the northern one in the south parking lot and the northern, or the southern one in the northern, southern parking lot. But what the truck will have to do, it can't make this movement here.
When you say this movement here is this right?
On the west side, coming around the parking field from the south parking field to the north parking field, or on the east side, from the south parking field to the, the north parking field to the south parking. The truck can't make that maneuver. So what he will have to do in these two parking fields, if he pulls in, he's going to have to pull back out and then drive out. And we've discussed that with Bob, and what he's asked for is just to provide those additional turning movements at those two points of access into the parking lot. And we will comply with that. Item 15 on page 13, we're still working out the details for the breezeway that runs between the two buildings. It's in this general area, but there will be some kind of support system that runs down along the building in between, it's both the east and the west building, in that drive aisle coming through the building. Item 16, page 13, we would agree, and we do have spot shots shown. I don't know, Mikey, may you have not seen that, but there are different slopes, you know, so you round it off so your undercarriage is not hit going into that parking garage. Item 17, page 13?
Just to stay on 16, that you are compliant with the comment on page 16?
We're okay with the comment, but I believe that the spot shots are there.
Okay.
You're talking about the ramps, David?
Yeah, the ramps going in. We have a slope, a steep slope, and then...
The curb ramps, I think they all apply, but one or two are able to be adjusted.
We'll look at, yeah. We're right at, we're...
Ramps is a different item, that's the ramps.
Yeah.
What I just, like, what Dave was saying, I think, is that transition slopes.
Right. I was looking at the wrong comment.
That will transition, correct?
Yes.
Last comment, not the future comment, but...
Item 17, there is a Note 20 on Sheet 4 that says exactly the restriction, so that's been taken care of. Item 18 on page 14, we will have a private collection. Item 19 on page 14, this has to do with hot boxes and the water line, and we will work with New Jersey American Water and the fire official to resolve that issue. Item 22, page 14, we will comply. Item 24, page 14, we will provide a van-accessible spot in each of the buildings, the east and the west building. Item 25 on page 14, we will provide the required height in the garage for the ADA vehicles. Going to page 15, item 26, I believe, is that the, yeah, that's what I testified. So we have, we have three different slopes going in, so your undercarriage doesn't bottom out, and I believe that is taken care of on the plans, but we'll resolve that with Michael. Item 27, we will provide the snowmelt detail, and the railings will be UCC compliant. Item 28 is that transitional slopes that we talked about going into the garage.
And we'll comply with that.
And we'll comply with that. Item 29, the system in the garage will contain a carbon monoxide detector, which will deploy the system. And I don't believe it's going to be hooked up to the emergency generator. I think we can talk to Greg about that if they need further clarification. Then moving along to site lighting, item 3, we discussed...
So just, I'm sorry, Dave?
Go ahead.
With regard to the stormwater management requirements on pages 15 and 16, those will be complied with by the applicant?
Yes. We're on page 17, site lighting, item 3, we talked about. The .1 is actually in the right-of-way for Fairview Avenue, and there are lights in Fairview. At the end of the day, we will comply with providing adequate lighting. Item number 7, page 17, we provided a lighting plan, this is for the parking deck? No, this is for the reduction, right? So we provided a plan just yesterday to Mike for 25% reduction in lighting off-peak, you know, after 10. It hasn't been reviewed yet, but we would agree. We're going to have dimmable lights, and we'll work out that nighttime reduction. Item 8, again, on page 18, the lights will be dimmable. And then item 9, I would say C3 above. And then item 10. I emailed you a lighting plan, and we will, we will be UCC compliant. Item 11... Item eleven, last item, we will remove the individual lights, yeah, yeah. On page nineteen, item number two.
So this, this is on, just, so, this is landscaping.
Site land, yeah, we're going to site landscaping, just, just a couple items, item two is a dragon lady holly, we will replace that, item number three is a birch that may be disease type, and we'll replace that as well. Item number five, we will be providing irrigation for the entire landscaping, and item number six, I talked to Henry Hinterstein, who provided the landscaping design for us, he's a landscape architect, and he said all these materials are salt tolerant. On to solid waste, item number one, on page twenty, there will be rooms in each building, this is similar to, there are other projects in Somerville, the waste will be wheeled out based on the frequency needed, and, you know, they will, they will have a contract with a private hauler, and the contract will ensure no, you know, areas outside the buildings, you know, where there would be garbage, you know, we'll keep the place neat and clean. Under sanitary sewer flows, item one, we will file for a TWA permit, that is required. Item number three, that has to do with the SRVSA fees, and we will comply with that. And then under H, Kirby Avenue redevelopment plan, I just wanna acknowledge items number two and three.
And we'll have some further testimony from John Soraco.
Yes, and I think, yeah, I got one. Then moving to page twenty-five, site utilities.
And in terms, just to be clear, in terms of the comments regarding apartment building decides, to the extent necessary, Mr. Soraco, the architect of the project, would provide comments to this?
Yes. So page twenty-five, under site utilities, item one, they, the PSENG will not review this application until we have a planning board, a preliminary site plan approval, and we will set up meetings accordingly and work through final design with them on this. Item number two, it has to do with the service connections for the hot boxes, we have service connections for both buildings on each wing, and the question is, will we require hot boxes, based on their current, and they gave us diagrams.
Who's, who's that?
New Jersey American Water provided diagrams of typical services, and we don't believe we're gonna need hot boxes, if we do, we'll be back.
Can you define what a hot box is?
A hot box is a big above-ground structure for a, it's a valve and a meter, everything's in there, they, the New Jersey American Water doesn't wanna go down into the, into a vault anymore, they want everything above ground, if if you wanna see one, there's, there's one on this, for this development, there's one right here.
When you say this development, located to the east?
To the east, yes, and it's, it's probably eight by twenty by six, or six feet high, so it's, it's a large structure. But we don't believe we need one, and again, we need to, we've had some informal meetings with New Jersey American Water, again, they want the, the preliminary site plan approval in hand before they work with you, and we will, again, meet with them and come up with an acceptable plan, and that will also do, have to do with the, the hydrant located in the rear of the parking lot that was required by Bob Lynn, we ran a dedicated line from the right of way in James Street into the parking lot, and there's a hydrant in the rear of the property, and we'll work with New Jersey American Water and Bob Lynn to come up with a final game plan on how that is serviced. Item K, on page twenty-six, emergency management plan, I would defer to the Office of Emergency Management on how they wanna handle that, and relative to the generator, I believe that Ryan Storms had provided the generator data to the borough previously, and it it has to comply with the noise standards, so we'll, we'll work that out with Mike.
Just moving on to, we don't have variances, so now, we have planning testimony regarding wavers that will be provided by Mr. Dean, now let's move on to this, and general comments, starting on page twenty-eight.
Item one. Item one, we were at forty feet from Fairview Avenue, and that was our, you know, we set the building there based on our understanding, New Jersey American Water, doubling the size of the setback from Fairview Avenue, and accommodating a nice island in the rear of the property, so that, I mean, that's our design, and we believe that we, we tried to address the comments from the last meeting. Item number two. So that's just a general comment.
Maybe number four.
Item four, we will agree to work with the, with Mike and the neighbor to modify that fence according to.
Next, number six.
Number six. Again, we'll work with Bob Lynn and New Jersey American Water to come up with a solution on the best way to provide adequate flow to that hydrant in the back of the property. Item eight, I, we don't believe we need a gutter boot, as all the gutters are more than, this, you know, a distance away from vehicles, I don't know, that becomes a necessary way.
With regard to number eleven, the flat roofs, that's something that Mr. Soraco or Mr. Dean are gonna address?
Yes.
And then, let's move on to twelve and thirteen, this is on page thirty.
The, item twelve, will electric chargers be installed? No, but they will be wired for future electric charging, and I think Greg Storms can elaborate on that further. Item thirteen, where will the visitors park, visitors will park in that southern parking lot with the, the tenants.
So before we, before we move on to the fire marshal memorandum, and get to ask Mr. Cole, is there any item that is contained in your report, in whatever it is, A nine, that you haven't addressed, that you still seek some clarification from, from Mr. Stires?
No, I think we have all the engineering addressed, sure the board grants approval, we can deal with the gutters, which is UCC environment, but high traffic, I'm not sure they're clear on the cadash on these, they're clear on the site plans with the piping, but not during architectural plan, or the roof clears, so we could sort that out.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a point to ask Mr. Soraco that.
Right, I'm saying, the drainage, Dave, Dave Stires shows the piping around the building, connecting to roof clears, but the roof clears, I, by recall, aren't shown on architecture, so the question is, where exactly they are in terms of whether you need a protection or not, that's, so, again, these, should the board grant approval, this opportunity to work out, on the road.
Thank you, so with regard to the, the fire memorandum.
Yes, so I'll refer to the March eleven, because the iterations were coming out based on conversations we were having with Bob Lynn.
So this is, I'm sorry, Dave, I apologize for keeping this rough, but, so the March eleventh memorandum, I believe, is, marks A six. Go ahead.
So, item one, we determined that we were agreeing, agreement with, item two, we were in agreement with, item three, Bob Lynn is requesting a loop system, we wanna get with New Jersey American Water and Bob Lynn and work out the best solution for this, we're not sure that you can service a hydrant with two connections, because they don't, how do you meter it, you know, it becomes complicated, so we just wanna get the two, everybody in a room together and work this out, and provide the adequate flow necessary.
Would the applicant agree to a condition that if it is feasible, and the fire marshal still requires it, but the applicant's not willing to, they'll come back before the board, or make a decision at that point?
Well, I, I think if we agree to a loop system, we're agreeing to, so maybe we don't have to come back.
Correct, I'm just saying, if, if it is possible according to New Jersey American Water, and Lynn is still requesting a loop system, but the applicant doesn't wanna provide it, then you'll have to come back before the board to figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, I, my recommendation would be is that the board would have this condition of approval, whatever the board, whatever the board decides, with regard to that, our, our suggestion is, should the application be approved, that the condition would state, as Mr. Stires stated, that the, the applicant is to work out the, the type of system to the satisfaction of the, of who?
That's what I'm trying to get, yeah.
Yeah.
So if New Jersey American Water says, yes, you can do it, 'cause I guess that's the main issue right now, and Lynn says, we want it, then the applicant will do whatever Lynn wants at that point, or come back before the board?
Yes.
As long as the, the resolution condition that we get that part is, is clear, just for the applicant.
Correct, yeah, just in order to track it up.
Thank you.
Item number four, on the next page, I did testify previously that we will provide the turning radiuses going into that southern parking field, and again, I indicated to Bob Lynn that the turning radiuses on the end of the west side of that parking field and the east side do not allow for the fire truck to make that movement, so they will have to back down that aisle and then pull out through the, the main driveway.
Could that movement be made if the islands were made a little smaller?
They, they actually have to get, the island would have to get larger, you need nine, eight, like eighty-two feet between the outer, outer radius of the first field to the, so you need eighty-two feet from here around to here.
Here, just describe.
The, the end of the, the southern parking lot, as you turn from one parking field into the other.
Is that for the largest, are you going with like the largest?
They gave us the large, yeah, yes.
Yeah, so other trucks.
Other trucks could make that move, yes.
The travel ways, Dave, would have to be wide and quick, I think.
Right, you'd have to probably switch.
Twenty-four to thirty-four feet or something, the travel ways.
If you, if you pulled these parking spaces on the southern end of the, the southernmost field internally, here, and then put the drive aisle on the south side, you'd get a little closer. Okay, I'm up to item five. The applicant has agreed to add the stairway stand pipes. Item six, we're in agreement with, item, the rest of them we're in agreement with.
So when you say the rest of that's items six through fourteen on, on A six?
Yes.
I believe that, unless there's anything else you wanna emphasize, Mr. Stires, I believe that concludes Mr. Stires' testimony, certainly open to the board and the public for questions.
Any questions?
Yes, I just wanna go right back to the item number four, about the apparatus turning for fire trucks, these depictions are, the fact that there are cars gonna be parked there, it'll be two o'clock in the morning, there's a full load of cars, can they get in there, in without crushing fifteen cars?
Yes, the drive aisle coming through, between the east and west building is twenty-four feet wide, and the drive aisle between the parking spaces in that southern lot is also twenty-four feet, so he's gonna make that, he's got, it's, it's the same size as a normal roadway, so he can make that sweep in, and the car should be off to the side in their parking stalls.
And then you had mentioned toward the end, about you would get more space if you moved the island or moved the parking further back?
Yeah, if you, if you opened up the, the distance between the southern parking field and the northern parking field, you can increase that radius to get closer to allowing that truck to make that movement.
Is that a beneficial thing?
I, I don't see what, you know, what the harm is, if he, if he's allowed to access the rear for fighting a fire in the back of that building, and then he has to back down that aisle, it's only several hundred feet to pull out, that's, that's, I don't believe that's the worst signal.
So he's not backing through the buildings, he's just backing and then turning?
He's backing straight back to the other, other side of the parking field and then pulling out.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay.
For number five, I know we said the stairway stand pipes are okay, but there was a question about stand pipes in the garage themselves.
Yeah, we talked to, at, at the stairwells, we, we talked to Bob about that and came up with a solution. So the stairwells in the parking garage would have connections, and I think, was there one in the actual garage, on the east garage, next to the?
That was gonna be in lieu of the stairwell, so we argued.
Yeah, we were in agreement to, to provide the FDC connections.
Okay.
I do have another question.
Okay.
Related to the hot boxes and where you're putting the building now.
Yes.
The last application was around twenty feet or so, this one's around forty feet.
Yes.
There was a mention in reports about possibly moving the building even further back, like sixty feet, but there was concerns about the hot boxes, but you're in the middle of talks with American Water, so if they would agree, could you move the building further back, deeper into the property, and then if they need a hot box, they put the hot box, if they don't need it, the building is a better location, potential?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, as we keep moving it back, we're gonna start cramming things back there, and, you know, I think we have a nice plan now, and I, I understand we maybe can steal a few more feet, but, you know, this, this is the plan we have.
Okay?
Any consideration at all to trying to modify it to make it?
We, we modified it three times.
Well, I understand that, yeah, yeah, this is like the fourth time you guys are working on this, I get that, I understand that, just seems to be closer than it needs to be.
And it started at ten feet and now it's at forty feet?
Yeah, the original.
From Fairview?
Yeah, the, the original plan that was presented to the redevelopment committee was ten feet, and the suggestion from that committee was to make it to twenty, and then we had the comments at the last hearing, and the consensus on our design team was, let's double it. And the consensus on our design team was, let's double it. And that's what we did.
Okay. Next witness.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to go to John Soraka.
He was sworn as well, right?
Yes, correct. I'll be. Mr. Soraka, as Ms. Kaczynski appropriately stated, you understand that you remain sworn and so qualified as an expert in the field of architecture, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you continue to be familiar with the architectural plans and the application materials submitted in support of this project?
Yes, I do.
So if you would start out by, first of all, do you have any exhibits to mark? New exhibits?
No, possibly some handouts, depending on how the testimony goes.
Okay. So with that, if you can start out by referring to your recently submitted February 14th, 2024, floor plans and elevations, and just identify for the board to what extent, if any, the, the design has changed since the previous submission to the board. And I'm also going to ask you, so I don't forget, to address Mr. Cole's comment regarding the roof.
Of course. So the most significant change to the building was, of course, adding the basement parking. That we, it's a fully in-ground basement from, from the street view, from the Fairview Avenue view. So there's no change in the appearance of the building from, from the street. In the back, there's, there's a minor change in our work. If we just go down to, if we look at PB, one of the renderings, the elevations, PB 400, that's towards the back of the package, we could see the parking, the grade dips down to allow the cars to ramp down into the basement. But apart from that, the exterior appearance of the building stays very, very similar to the last application, except for the fact also that we added mansard roofs in between the gables, the gables that were always in our, in our renderings for the building. So, and, and the amenity space, this third floor amenity space is like a sky bridge between the two buildings. That got a little smaller in order to allow for more setbacks that, that David spoke about. The other, there's some minor interior changes because of the parking lot. We had to rearrange the elevator location. That forced a little change in the, the amenity space layouts. But all of it's insignificant in the sense that all the amenities are still there. We didn't lose any amenities, they just got rearranged slightly. There, there was a comment from Mr. Cole regarding some of the apartments on the upper floors have these rooms called studies. And that was a mislabeling. That, those should be labeled as storage rooms. We apologize for that mislabeling. And if we get a positive vote, hopefully in our compliance drawings, we will make that correction. Other, other comments just regarding Mr. Steyer's testimony. There was a comment about the, the leader, the roof drainage leader boots. And I should just point out that on our elevations, towards the back of the PB 400 series, we do identify the gutter boots that Mr. Cole asked for, requested. So those are the, those are the, that's a summary of the changes. I guess really the, one of the more pressing issues, of course, is the classification of the building as a flat roof building. I'm not sure if I, I did prepare a response to that. I'm not sure if I should pass that out or I should just give testimony to it.
Mr. Chairman, we're hearing a lot of people talking. We just really need to make sure the record is fair and not picking up any current backlash. We appreciate you all, plenty of time to talk.
So why don't you, if you can first read from, whatever you wish to read from, and then if the board has additional questions, obviously you can respond accordingly.
Right.
And John, just to, just to tee this up for a second.
Sure.
It was pointed out in A9, in Mr. Cole's report, that the redevelopment plan prohibits flat roofs and that variance or design exception, excuse me, relief would be required because the applicant is proposing a flat roof. And I asked you, as an architect, as well as Mr. Dean, to take a look at that in relation to the comment and also in relation to the language which is used in the redevelopment plan regarding this particular issue and the intent of what was desired, I guess, by the time.
Sure. So I, it's my interpretation of the reading of the redevelopment plan that the intent was to have a building that doesn't have the appearance of a flat roof. Even though, and, and the redevelopment plan does acknowledge this, that rooftop mechanical equipment is, is very prevalent on any, any contemporary, any modern building today. So, so the redevelopment plan is really saying two things. It's saying that it does recognize the need for rooftop equipment. That's section, that's in the redevelopment plan, section eight, paragraph D. It does acknowledge the need for rooftop equipment. But then at the same time, it also says that the flat roofs are prohibited. So there's a little contradiction in the redevelopment plan. But taking those two into account, I think really what the intent was is that, yeah, well, just like the bill, I was looking, I studied the building next to ShopRite, those buildings going up. A large portion of that roof is flat, but there is a, but when you stand in the ShopRite parking lot, you see a pitched roof. And we're doing, we're pretty much doing the exact same thing. Where from the street, you see the mansard portion of the roof and our gables and all our reverse gables scattered around the building. But in reality, on top of all that, behind of all of that, there, there is a flat roof to house all the necessary mechanical equipment. So when you look at PB 204, that's our roof plan, you could see the hatched area, over fifty percent of the roof is a pitched roof. And under, and the remaining portion is, is a flat roof in order to accommodate the necessary mechanical equipment for the, for the project.
And the, and the flat, the flat portion, so to speak, is on the interior?
Yes, it's, it's in the middle of the roof. Station House was done the, in a similar manner. As I said, the project next to ShopRite was, was done the same way also. So, so it seems to be an approach that was used quite often, you know, in projects in and around Somerville, and we're just continuing with that type of process.
And if, if it was determined that exception relief for this design deviation was required of the board, I know you're not a planner, but, but an architect. Would you, the standard, if the standard is, you know, reasonableness and practical analysis, you know, would you conclude as an architect that, you know, given the language in the redevelopment plan, given the need to provide mechanicals and design to have them on the roof as opposed to on the sides of the building, that this would be reasonable and appropriate?
Absolutely. And I should also point out that the mansard portion, the, the redevelopment plan does allow for, specifically it allows for a mansard roof. It allows for hip, mansard, gable, A-frame, Dutch hip. Those are all the types of roofs listed in the redevelopment plan. And a mansard, by definition, is a roof that has a pitched section that's fate, that's on the exterior side of the building, and it terminates to a flat roof. So we, I, I believe we actually meet the definition of a mansard roof, which is one of the allowable roof types in the redevelopment plan.
And as you stated earlier, there's a separate section dealing with rooftop mechanical equipment. It states that all such rooftop equipment should be set back so that it can't be seen from the street, correct?
Correct, which is what, how we designed it, and we, and we meet that criteria that it can't be visible, that it's not visible from the street.
So, and before we get to Mr. Cole's report, specific as to architectural elements, I know, John, that you provided some extensive testimony the last time we were before this board in support of this application in terms of the architectural design, the image, the character, the types of materials. You know, given your testimony this evening and the minimal changes to the elevations from the prior iteration of the plan, does that testimony still hold true for this revised plan?
Yes, it does.
And, and the fact that it's pushed back even further, double from, from Fairview, does that support your conclusions?
Uh, yes.
So with that, why don't you, if you can, I know Mr. Cole referenced certain architectural requirements, I believe, starting on page 21 of his March 5th report, Mark is A9. Just if you can, just take a look at those and, and please provide some commentary. You can just actually just go, there are not that many of them, just, just one by one. And one of them I'm going to ask you to talk about is a comment about whether the applicant can demonstrate that the character and style of commercial residential development, that the residential development in this case shall be consistent with the architectural style of the apartment found in the borough and in the surrounding town, which is another thread.
Yeah, so we, we looked at a couple of projects in the borough and in the county. And one of them, one of them being Station House, which, which I believe, from what I hear in town, is that it's considered to be a very successful project, both aesthetically, from a tenant perspective. And we have very, very similar architectural elements detailing an overall composition to the Station House. In the county, in, in Warren, there's Diamond, the Diamond Project at Warren, the Diamond at Warren. That's a project that has similar type of gables, similar hardy plank siding, similar type of stonework at the, at the first floor of the building. Porches are dealt with in a very similar way. And I should point out that the Diamond also has the roof system that I spoke about, meaning a mansard roof leveling off to a flat portion. You know, and there are other projects in and around the, the county that, that we feel we are very consistent with the design approach that they have taken.
And again, with regard to the redevelopment plan architectural requirements on pages, referencing pages 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 of Mr. Cole's March 5th report, Mark is A9. Do you have any further comments or object to or clarify any of those?
As I said, comment 16 regarding the mislabeled study, that will be, that will be addressed hopefully in the compliance drawings if we get that part.
So with that, I have no further questions for Mr. Soraka, going up to the board. And I guess maybe, let me start with Mr. Cole, whether there's any item in your report deals with architecture that Mr. Soraka may have not referenced that you wish that he responded to?
Can I just interrupt? I'm sorry, one minute, okay. Just regarding the, the fire marshals, the fire officials letter. I just have one comment on that, if you don't mind me interrupting you. I just want to go through the letters. There was, he, Robert Lynn has requested that there's no electric vehicles, charging stations in the parking garage in the basement. We, it, it's a very important marketing tool to have. Well, let's, let me back up a little bit. Having a parking garage by itself that has an elevator that goes directly to the residential floors in itself is a very, very strong marketing tool. And that allows for the attraction of very strong tenants into the building. And, you know, the prominence of Teslas out there and other EV cars, the applicant would be handicapped if they didn't have the ability to put EV chargers in the parking garage. So we respectfully request that the fire marshal, fire official will, will grant us relief on that. I should point out that between the parking garage and the four residential floors up above, there's going to be approximately a sixteen-inch thick concrete slab. We, we call it a transfer slab. You see it in a lot of the buildings going around. That is, that is a serious fire rating in itself. It's a three-hour fire rating. We understand the concerns of EV charging stations. At the same time, there is a marketing component to the building that, that should be acknowledged.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay.
Anything else regarding the?
No, 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 sorry about, sorry about that, okay.
So I guess I'll open it up to the board and specifically, Mr. Cole, if there's anything that we, that we missed that you, what?
Questions?
Soraka addressed.
No, I think John brought it up.
Thank you.
I do have a comment on the EV in the parking garage. It's not about the rating of the wall that's there. It's that when those cars go, they take everything around them. So it's, it's more of a safety concern than it really is on whether you can have it from going to the apartment buildings. It takes a lot of water to put those fires out. And what we've seen historically over the last couple of years is, especially in the parking garages, they become worse and worse. So I would like it to be adhered to as what the fire marshal would like.
If I may respond, on other projects what we've done, and I didn't really discuss this with the applicant, but all our parking spaces in the garage are basically grouped in, in threes. We have three parking spaces in a column, three parking spaces in a column. And what we've done in other projects is we put fire-rated walls between every three cars where there are EV stations. And that, so it, it just, it, it basically limits the ability to, for the fire to spread throughout the entire garage, so.
I still would defer to the fire marshal, who's the expert on it.
Okay, I'm just.
I would definitely defer to Lisa on this because the county has put out.
Takes approximately eight to nine hours for a full Tesla fire to go out.
Because the county has handled multiple, how many now?
Multiple.
Yeah.
And the issue is, you know, Liz, and I do understand the market. And I think that's why the outside parking is, you know, their charging stations outside is much more. But in an enclosed parking garage, they're seeing it more and more. It's, it's just a true safety hazard.
Any other questions from?
Any other questions? Larry?
I have several. You'd mentioned Warren, Diamond.
Yeah.
What's across the street from that? Across the road, is it Mount Hood Road going up the hill?
Yeah, I really can't, I've been up and down the road a number of times, but not on a daily basis. I really can't. I really can't.
I guess what I'm starting to try to get to is that Warren does things differently than us because they're different than us. And I don't know what's across the street from the Diamond, but I can tell you what's across the street from this. The second thing is that you had mentioned that this is very similar to Station House, and I would agree, it is very similar. Footprint, layout, but on Veterans Memorial Drive, there's two lanes of traffic before you get to the parking deck and office buildings. On Fairview, on this project, it's across the street, one lane each way, and they are. So, I would question again, are we thinking about maybe shifting it away because the extra lane of traffic each way barely makes us even with the doubling of your moving it back?
I, I understand that. I just want to point out that not only do we fall within the bulk requirements that were established in the redevelopment plan, that we had nothing, that wasn't our making. So, not only do we meet it, but we actually exceeded, as David Steyer's points out, we kept moving the building back. So, I think there is really no question on the bulk requirements of the project in terms of meeting the redevelopment plan.
But if you're going to compare it to another building in town, I'm not really overly concerned about Warren, the county, that's nice, but we're here in Somerville, and the way I look at it, this is a lot more mass on the road. I would think that it might be better for everyone, the residents and you guys, to move it even further back because then the impact is lessened. Right now, this is a high impact for the 10 families that live across the street. There's a parking deck across from Station House. Nobody's complaining.
Right, understood. The only other thing I want to point at is, as David pointed out, there was a significant change to the landscaping in the front of the building by going through, a significant change in the building by putting the parking of, close to half the parking in the building, it allowed for an incredible amount more of landscaping in the front. But I understand your point.
So, quick question. So, you went from, I'll call it the two legs, the eastern and western leg, you went from 10 feet to 40 feet as your setback, is that?
You know, I don't know the exact numbers, I forget what we started with.
On the eastern and western legs.
The original concept was, can the redevelopment base suggest it's holding 20? So, we, first site plan application is 20. And we understood the neighbors and we came back and we doubled it.
So, the bulk of the face of the building, how, what's the depth off of Fairview for the bulk of the face of the building?
I can answer. The two wings are 73 feet wide. And the, as it's set back, you know, the other portion of that building, that's 150 feet.
Back from Fairview?
Right.
Okay.
So, and that represents 60% of the building front. So, 40% is 70 feet away, or 40 feet away, and then the remaining 60% is 150 feet from the right away Fairview.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, next witness.
I'll call Gary Dean, please.
Good evening.
Mr. Dean, would you still understand that you remain sworn?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and so qualified as an expert in fields of parking circulation and plan?
Correct.
And you're familiar with the plans, including the revised plans that were submitted in support of this application?
Yes.
And you're familiar, certainly can continue to be familiar with the property in the surrounding neighborhood?
Correct.
So, why don't we start out by you, you know, just kind of giving an overview based from a parking and circulation perspective with regard to the revised plan, and then we'll get to Mr., and if you want to incorporate Mr. Cole's comments from his report into your comments, that's fine.
Certainly. I think, as you've heard, the most notable changes to the plan are the elimination of all variances. The applicant heard the board's concerns, those of the public, literally went back to the drawing board, amended their design to clean it up and have it be in full compliance with your redevelopment plan. So, with that, there's little to say in the way of planning, other than we've moved to a fully conforming application. As you've heard, the most notable change is the additional setback of the building, but from my perspective, we were advocating originally, and there was some debate about what constitutes the front yard. Rather than invite that debate, the applicant once again heard your concerns and pushed all of the parking either under the building or behind the building. The only way to further improve setbacks relative to the streetscape is, we're constrained by your redevelopment plan. We either have the building closer to the street and the parking behind it, or we do the reverse. We shove the building all the way to the back, closest to the railroad tracks, and put the parking in front. Those are our constraints. So, again, we've heard your concerns, the plan has been amended to be compliant. In terms of that circulation, there is no longer parking anywhere in the front of the building, irrespective of how you consider the front of the building, whether it's the wings or whether it's the bulk of the building. And that comes at considerable added expense to the project. Obviously, putting in underground parking is more costly, but again, that has been accepted by the applicant to provide you with a better plan. We continue to meet all of, in my opinion, the recognized standards for parking and the EV spaces. And those come with certain credits that are allowed, that were written into the legislation to provide developers, I'll say, with a modicum of incentive to put this equipment in, in that you get a little bonus on parking if you put in the EV spaces. And as, I'll say, internal combustion engines are, I don't want to say outlawed, but I assume the public is aware that by 2035, no more sales of gasoline engines, and that's 11 years away. So, at least the intent is to go to a carbon-free, pollutant-free environment with electric vehicles, and particularly with multifamily buildings, those need to be charged. So, that is sort of the genesis of that legislation and the accompanying credits for the EV spaces. Certainly mindful of the concerns of fire personnel, Somerville is not the community where I've heard the concerns related to firefighting and the inherent issues with for the current technology, lithium batteries and the length at which they burn. So, that will be accommodated in the surface parking lots. Beyond that, I think.
So, let me just back you up for a couple of things. So, let's, before we get into planning, with regard to circulation, driveway geometry, location of the existing driveways, I know you provided extensive testimony at the last hearing before this board in support of the application. Given the revised plan, and particularly now eliminating the parking in the front, providing the garage parking, do any of your conclusions change, Mr. Dean, in terms of safe and efficient circulation flow around the building and throughout the site?
Let me, just for the clarity of where we were and where we are, I'm going to refer to exhibit A1, which was marked at the August 27 hearing. This is a colored rendering of Mr. Steyer's site plan, and I'm going to point to the eastern building to the right-hand side of the exhibit, the western building. Fairview Avenue is at the top. You will see the horseshoe-type driveway where ingress is to the west, egress is to the east, and the visitor spaces and drop-off loading spaces, handicap spaces, that were in the elbows or corners of each of the buildings. And then we had a much larger surface parking lot to the rear. Now, to compare that with what has been marked A10, you'll see the horseshoe access system has been retained unchanged. The difference is, the original courtyard in the front, which featured some angled parking, and forgive me, I'm pointing to the north of, or the infield area, if you will, between the driveways, that parking has been eliminated, as have the handicap spaces at the elbows. What we've left are not parking spaces, they'll be posted as such, but for Grubhub, Uber, Amazon, package parcel delivery, those are being proposed to accommodate that traffic, just to eliminate movements getting in behind the building. But they're not parking, they're not striped as such. So, our access remains essentially unchanged. Fairview Avenue is straight in alignment and level, so there are no site distance obstructions, and that has been unaffected with the revisions. The traffic circulation, as one leaves the rear parking lot, which again, you can see is a much smaller footprint, directs all traffic to the easterly driveway so that they may exit. I believe there is a design waiver that is required for the width of the driveways, which we've proposed at 20. And the reason for that is, under the NFPA, which is the fire code, what's considered a fire access road is required to be 20 feet, and we meet that standard. And the purpose of that is, for any aerial equipment, the trucks come without rigors so they don't topple over, and that width allows those to be deployed in a stabilized pavement area. So, for that reason, we have proposed that width, and in my opinion, which is consistent with at least one other agency in the state, NJDOT, a bifurcated driveway design, that is, one that has separate ingress and separate egress, counts as one driveway. You're accommodating an in and an out. We can't have just one driveway, we'd have a dead-end road. But it also serves an added benefit of, for whatever reason, if one or the other is blocked, it does allow a secondary means for access to the rear parking area. So, in my opinion, it's unchanged from the prior iteration, and I think in terms of overall design, it adds a little bit more green space and certainly tucks the parking under the building, which has minor, as it's essentially invisible to the public, but certainly has better aesthetic appeal.
So, before we leave what I'll call the, you know, traffic circulation parking category, you touched on two of the items that require exception relief from this board, namely the width of the driveway and also the fact that there are two driveways as opposed to one. And since we're on that, you understand that for purposes of the board granting exception relief, for those two items certainly, that there has to be a determination that the deviation proposed is reasonable and within the general purpose and intent for site plan review, if the literal enforcement is impracticable or will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions, which don't necessarily apply here regarding the undue hardship. So, can you just, just in terms of the proofs with regard to those two items in particular for the exceptions, just comment on that?
Sure. In terms of driveway width, I believe I've indicated, much like putting the EV parking outside, it's a safer alternative, and particularly being mindful of the need for fire, principally fire access apparatus. So, a little extra driveway width has essentially no impact on impervious coverage, and certainly is a superior design to accommodate those needs. And I would also submit it's further regulated under whatever, I'll say, standards NFPA holds to have the 20-foot-wide fire access road. In terms of the number of driveways, functionally, as I've indicated, from my opinion, as a traffic engineer, it's one driveway, it just happens to be split. And it happens to be split with a big boulevard or a big landscaped area in between. It provides a superior zoning alternative, again, for safety, in that it allows a secondary means of ingress or egress under emergency conditions. So, for those two reasons, I think we've met an appropriate standard of proof to grant that waiver.
And the, I'm sorry, somebody?
Just for clarification, are you agreeing to have the charging stations outside in the surface park?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was.
We understood the concern, and, you know, we certainly want to advocate for the highest degree of safety.
And based on the revised design, the adjacent street system will not experience any degradation in operating conditions?
Correct, and that was, that was our original findings in our traffic.
And that hasn't changed, correct?
No, correct.
And there was, I think there was some comment about the intersection of James Street and Loser Avenue at the last hearing.
Yes.
Has your conclusions changed with regard to your analysis and testimony regarding that intersection?
It has not, and that's buttressed by, over the course of, I think, the fall, PSENG, I think, has been doing gas line replacements, and there has been a detour on East Main Street during that time, which put a lot more traffic on both Fairview and Loser Street, far more than this project would generate. And we went out there and we did some counts, and we saw the detour, and it was like, wow, these numbers are way higher than when we originally did our counts, and it was operating fine. Now, we don't have the detour in place anymore, but that at least allowed us the opportunity to address Mr. Cole's concerns. Fairview Avenue certainly will, our site will add some traffic to it, whether it's on Loser or James, but not enough to create significant degradation or changes in the operating condition at that intersection.
So, again, with regard to parking, traffic, circulation, your testimony conclusions that were set forth, excuse me, the last hearing, are unchanged based on the revised design, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, you talked about the two design waivers, one for the width of the driveway and the other for the number of driveways or curb cuts. There was also, as you heard from Mr. Steyer's testimony, a request, if necessary, for deviation, design exception deviation regarding the lighting minimum foot candle levels, and notwithstanding the fact that Mr. Steyer stated that if need be, we certainly will comply. Do you have any concerns in terms of impracticability, reasonableness as to that design exception?
I think the concern particularly for abutting residences is light, and we want to adhere to the standards that are appropriate to accommodate pedestrian activity and safe vehicular flow. Obviously, at night, cars have headlights, it's a little different, it's principally for any individuals that are out walking. While the lighting levels can certainly be increased to meet your standard, I think we're meeting the intent and purpose of those standards, and again, trying to be mindful as to minimizing the impact to the highest extent possible on the surrounding property. So, usually what occurs, and I'm by no means a lighting expert, that a nightlight test is done post, you know, in between, say, TCO and CO, and if adjustments need to be made, working with Mr. Cole, to augment, say, key areas where additional lighting may be necessary, that's usually the best way to approach it, in that, you know, we can run the models today, but once one takes into consideration, for example, the light fixtures on existing utility poles in the area, it may change the need to increase those lighting levels further. So, certainly there's a willingness on the part of the applicant to be subject to that kind of post-construction evaluation.
So, the only, I think, two items that remain for discussion in terms of planning and more particularly, exception relief, have to do, first with the flat roofs and then the architectural look of the building. And I know that Mr. Soraco, and you were present for his testimony this evening and at the last meeting, when he addressed those, certainly the matter with regard to the flat roofs. So, let's talk about that first.
Sure. Looking at it from a planning perspective, the objective is to present the appearance of a pitched roof, and that's done by using the mansard treatment, among others. of a pitched roof, and that's done by using the mansard treatment, among others. Uh, uh, in my opinion, and referring to Mr. Soraco's exhibit, and I know it may be difficult for the public or the board from the dais, but looking at the rendering that has been provided, it certainly gives the appearance of a pitched roof. It is not a flat roof, for example, the cobalt, or the building, I think diagonally opposite this meeting room, which has a traditional flat roof in a very modern style. This particular building, in looking at some aerial imagery, gives the appearance from the street of having a pitched roof. However, as one looks on top of the building, it is flat. It has a mansard roof, but anyone walking down the street wouldn't know the difference. Uh, the station house was built with that exact same type treatment, where it gives the appearance of a pitched roof, and certainly not a flat roof, it's just truncated, and it doesn't continue up into the sky to meet at a peak. It looks like it does, it just doesn't physically actually, and it creates the parapet to screen the rooftop equipment. Um, in the redevelopment plan, it requires that we consider, I believe, not only buildings within the community, but elsewhere in the county.
Well, well, that's, that's, that's separate, so I just wanted to just deal with the, so the, anything more with regard to the flat roofs?
No.
Okay. So the, the final, um, point, uh, that I think was raised by Mr. Cole's report, has to do with some, um, comment in the redevelopment plan, um, ensuring that the development's character and style, um, in this case, multifamily, uh, development's character and style, is consistent with the architectural style found in the borough and surrounding county, and complements the existing built-in environs, in accordance with the Kirby Avenue, uh, redevelopment plan.
Yes. As, as we look at our immediate neighbor, the Park Building, I, I submit that this design is vastly superior in the choice of siding materials, which is, uh, cementatious, hardy plank boards, which are not only durable and maintenance-free, but certainly better emulate the traditional clapboard siding. Vinyl does the same thing, but vinyl has its own look, and this is significantly better than our, than our neighbor. Um, we also have, as you'll see from the rendering, a lot of relief in the facade. And I, I have some exhibits, I don't intend to show them unless the board has a question, but as one looks at the facade of the Park Building, it, it is monolithic and flat, and there's limited relief in terms of, uh, building setbacks and, and, and creating shadow lines and such. So I think we're not only, I don't know that we'd want to be consistent with our neighbor in that instance, I think it's a, a, a more elegant design, it's a very subjective opinion, I understand that, and I'll let the rendering speak for itself, but I think, uh, it is enhanced significantly from our neighbor. As we look at the station house, as Mr. Soraco indicated, this design is closer in character and quality to the station house. Um, you know, as we look, and I, and I don't want to cite it as a, as a, a negative example, but certainly, the cobalt has a, a very polarizing style that some people may love, some people may not. I think we're more compatible with station house, uh, even the Doughty Building that was done by the applicant, that features mixture of materials with some, uh, masonry at the foundation and such. Um, there's a, a newer set of buildings that were built on Route 206 in Hillsborough by Larkin, just south of Bottle King. That features a very similar style with banding of brick and stone at the bottom, uh, divided light windows, a, a lot of white trim, as you see, um, and as close as one can be in a traditional multifamily building, continues with the character that we find mostly in single-family homes. Um, so in my opinion, in the, was it the, I think it was called the Diamond Building in Warren, that actually happened to be one of my projects, that too has a, a lot of relief in the roof, uh, and in the building facade, so we certainly are complying with the objectives of that redevelopment plan standard, to be, I'll say, consistent with what I believe are better architectural examples in, in, in the community. And, and obviously, this community, uh, to an extent, is similar in terms of its treatment.
And, um, and given the, um, testimony that has been provided by the various witnesses up to this point, as well as the application materials, um, submitted, and the, uh, improvements to this project throughout the course of this application, including increasing the setbacks, reducing impervious coverage, reducing runoff from the site, eliminating variances, increasing landscaping, and increasing parking, um, do you have i- an opinion as to whether, um, this project in its current iteration, uh, meets the, uh, spirit and intent of the, the Kirby Avenue redevelopment plan?
I, I, I think the, the plan has come a long way from its first iteration. I think the board, uh, identifies your concerns with the original plan and its layout, and I think the, I know that the applicant heard those concerns, and addressed those in, in a positive manner to bring the plan fully into compliance with, with what we believe your objectors, objectives were in the redevelopment plan. So I think the, the absence of any variances speaks for itself, um, and, and certainly yields, um, a quality product for the borough, and, and certainly something the applicant is, uh, can be proud of, as, as well as this board, uh, in terms of it, it being a high-quality project. So I think, on balance, anytime one can get rid of variances, we've listened, and we've essentially followed, not essentially, we've followed the blueprint, which you've mapped out for the development of the site in your redevelopment plan.
Thank you. I have no, no further questions for Mr. Dean at this time.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks, Gary.
Thank you for your time.
Second break. So I'm just gonna call, uh, Mr. Storms, just to make some comments.
I don't think he was...
So, I, I think, well, you, you, you provided testimony at the last hearing, correct?
Yes, I believe I did.
So I think he was sworn, just, but thank you for clarifying. So, um, Greg, you're, you're principal of the applicant, correct?
Yes, I am.
And I know you, you told me that you wanted to, um, just provide just some, um, comments to the board.
I will be brief. Good evening, Greg Storms, DGM Management, Foundry Holdings Managing Member. Uh, tonight, I will, I'm speaking on behalf of our Foundry team, especially my son, Ryan, who has been, done most of the work, and has had the vision to, uh, bring the, this project to where it is today. Um, he is the third generation who not only lives in Somerville, but believes and wants to contribute to the growth and success of our town. As you know, the Storms family has, has been involved for many years in revitalization of Somerville. We have renovated and modernized over ten buildings, fifteen storefronts on, and ma- on main streets. When developing, developing the concept of our Foundry project, we tried to keep with the historical nature of Somerville, and with many of its architectural features that John has shown with you tonight. We want to build a building that our future residents will enjoy living in, and be able to call Somerville their home. We agree with Mr., with Mayor Gallagher that Somerville needs to keep reinventing itself. Thanks to this board and our mayor and council, Somerville, Somerville is now one of the most successful towns in New Jersey. I like to think that us, our team at DGM Management, has been a key player in that success. Our Foundry project will give new life to the abandoned site, and be one more step in the re- revitalization of Fairview Avenue and the Kirby Avenue redevelopment plan. We look forward to continually partnering with the borough of Somerville on its continued success, and we ask for your support on the Foundry project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Storms.
Thanks. Any questions?
Any questions?
Nope.
That's not for you.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, at this time, I will open it up to the public for questions and comments. Please step up to the microphone and address your, your comments and questions to me, and I will redirect them. Identify yourself and provide your address for the record.
Can I stay here, or do you want me to go back?
No, you can stay there. They, they can work at that microphone.
Thank you.
Questions or comments, I just want...
Anybody?
Clarification, is it questions or comments?
Either.
Either.
Either, okay, great. Um, um... I, I will. Sorry, we'll make a break. I'm Catherine Santos, I live at seventy-nine Fairview Avenue, which is directly across the street from the applicant. Um, I work for an architecture firm in town, and, um, that gives me the certain set of skills to be able to produce, um, plans, views, um, and I've generated three-dimensional models, um, to show the board what you're asking the other residents of Fairview Avenue to look at and to experience on a daily basis.
Mr. Son, do you have a, a question?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to just, uh, understand Ms. Santos's qualifications, if any, and I know she works for an architecture firm, which is great, just in terms of, of whether, do you have a degree in architecture?
I do not have a degree in architecture. I've worked in the industry, um, for ten years, so I...
In what capacity?
I am a, um, designer at SSD Architects.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so just for purposes of the record, you're not submitting yourself to the board...
No, I am not an expert, not at all. I just have the resources in order to produce similar situations, and I will present them to the board. Okay.
So I just want the board to understand, um, as Ms. Santos indicated, she's not representing herself as an expert in the field of architecture, and when you're weighing the testimony of the applicant's expert in architecture versus Ms. Santos and the comments she'll make, I just want you to keep that in mind. Certainly, she can provide us with, uh, whatever information she has, and we'd like to hear how you prepared, what you prepared, and when, and with what, and just to give them a little bit of flavor, but I, I just want to remind the board of that.
Of course. So, um, I use a program called Revit. Um, I took the applicant's documents that they have provided, and I three-dimensionally modeled the building. Um, I've been doing this for ten-plus years, um, on other projects throughout, um, New Jersey. So, um, I have three-dimensionally printed the building with a three-dimensional printer that you can purchase online. Um, the, the scale of this, um, is, um, scaled to their specific drawings, um, and I can show you that now. So, um, I have three-dimensionally printed, um, our existing buildings of our homes. I used Google Earth, they can give you the, the, um, height of the building and the height of, um, the, uh, rating plan, um, for our properties, and I've, um, modeled them based on that information.
Do you want to do tests of that?
Yes, of course. Um, I've left the applicant's building loose, so you can see what it would be like if the building was shifted back, I know that was some, something that was discussed, and with obvious reasons, I understand, with, um, site parking, me personally, as being a resident that's going to live next to this, I'd rather have a little bit more parking in the front than have the building so far forward. Um, I have also provided, um, these are images of the sun, and what it will do at various times in the year. So I have, um, each winter solstice, nine AM, you can see what, where the sun is in the sky.
How did you, how did you prepare that?
In red, yeah. And I can provide anything file-wise that people want to see, I can provide that to the experts of the applicant, if they would like to see that. So, at nine AM on a winter solstice, um, the applicant's building completely shadows, um, Mr. Verdo's property. Maybe it's gonna until maybe around eleven o'clock that, in the winter months, that that would no longer be shadowing the application. I also have other seasons, if you want to see them at the same timeframe. Apart from me providing this documentation for you today, um, I also want to make mention of, um, on ApartmentFinder.com, you can see right now that there are forty-two open, available apartments in Somerville. Um, we also have, as you know, the Kirby Village Apartments that are being constructed. You have the apartments that are i- in the works on West Main Street and South Davenport Street. I don't know when those are gonna get finished, but at some point. And then also, the proposal for the Main Street and the Veteran Memorial Bell, where there will also be apartments that I believe. So we have a lot of open vacancies, and I guess my argument is, why do we need more? So, that's what I have on that end. I also believe that the building is very repetitive, and I know that is one of the qualifications that needs to be looked at.
Thank you. You have a question?
I just have a couple of questions. Um, Ms. Ms. Santos, did, did you review the, um, the ordinance or the Kirby Avenue redevelopment plan to ascertain, um, what relief is required for the applicant as part of this project?
No, sir.
And, um, have you ever provided testimony before planners on the board before?
Um, only on the last time that this application was...
Just, just with this application?
Yes, sir.
Correct? And, and you've never prepared or presented any form of, uh, shadow study to any board for any purpose, ever, correct?
I have to my clients, sir.
To your clients, but not, not in a public forum where you were sworn to provide witness testimony, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you, you've never provided, or qualified to provide a type of economic impact, then, correct?
No.
Okay, all right, nothing further, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we ask a, a question of...
Go ahead.
You had mentioned that you would ra- you, again, this is urgent, you may rather have parking in the front with the building shifted back?
Yes, sir, I'd rather have to have parking with landscaping than have the building as far forward. From my vantage point, from my window, all I will see is this building. So if I may use the site plan.
Let's just reference what plan you were...
Of course. So this is...
I think that's what we marked as eight-nine.
Okay, yep, so this is the rendered site plan. Um, my home is right here.
Sorry, eight-hundred.
Sorry.
Okay, it's not on the next slide.
Yeah, eight-hundred, it is on. Um, this is my home right here, from my living room and kitchen windows, I look directly at this portion of the building, which is forty-eight. This western side of the building is what I get to look at, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is, oh, sorry. Hi, my name is Lauren Watson, I live at fifty-seven Fairview Avenue. I've lived there for five years, before that, I rented in Somerville for five years. Um, I'm gonna talk numbers for a second, and I just want to say, I am a certified math teacher, if anybody wants to ask me about that. Um, so I just want to talk about doubling, and how we keep talking about, we doubled the setback. Well, in the end, if you have one dollar to your name, and you've doubled your money, it still really isn't that great, so I don't think doubling was really that great in this situation. Um, Mr. Dean talks, kept talking about neighbors, and how this building fits in with the surrounding environs of the neighbors, but he mentions Park, at the Park Apartments, as his neighbors? I'm sorry, Park is not the neighbors, the neighbors are the people sitting behind us, and we're talking about a bunch of two-story buildings. So, no, a four-story building that's practically on the street, okay, double the setback, still does not fit in with the surrounding environs. You wouldn't want it in front of your house, we don't want it in front of our house. Mr. Storms talks about, in his little s- thing, he talked about how Somerville is constantly reinventing itself, and that's true, but we're getting to a point that this doesn't feel like reinvention, this feels like regurgitation, because how many times are we now seeing this in Somerville? So yes, let's reinvent with something new and different, not the same old stuff that keeps popping up in this town, except the difference is, this time, you're putting it in front of our houses. This isn't on Main Street. Yes, Station House is a lovely apartment complex, but when I walk up to it and think, oh my God, this is gonna be right in front of my house? This four-story tall building? I can't even comprehend it. So I'm just, I'm, I'm pleading with you. I understand this is a big decision, and I do understand that if you... a big decision, and I do understand that if you vote no, there's going to be repercussions. So, I just want to say, I really appreciate that you guys really seem like you're taking the time to review this, because this is directly impacting our lives, and I'm just asking that you fight for us. Somerville, what I love the most about it, and the reason I wanted to live here the most is because of the small-town feel, and this is going to take that away from us. So, sorry, I'm shaking because I'm nervous, but thank you, and thank you for really putting the time and thought into this, and thank you for fighting for us, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Paulina Harkowitz. I live at fifty-eight Fairview Avenue, which is a front door onto Fairview, just like they would be. First thing I'd like to say is, the picture with the clouds, that was not taken from across the street. That is not a head-on picture. That picture was taken, I believe, from James Street and Fairview. So, it was taken this way on an angle, rather, so you're not really seeing what we're going to see, because this side of the picture is way far back and looks real tiny. So, that picture is not straight on. Just a couple other points. The, I'm going to say third bedroom, that you're not going to agree with, is now a storage facility with a window. So, I have a little problem with that. Doesn't sound like a storage place to me. Another one, traffic. Page twenty-nine. You mentioned an intersection of James Street and Lozier. They do not intersect. James is over here. Parallel to it is Lozier, next to my house, here. So, that's incorrect. That's in, is it with the parking, isn't it? Oh, emerging from the site. Also, on the traffic, I'd like to know if the traffic person ever sat in front of my house, the corner of Lozier and Fairview, and watched Torpies ball games come out, because you've got thirty, forty cars from Main Street to Torpies, and it's there all summer, all spring. So, the people coming out of here-
Would you please try to speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. The people coming out of this building, if they make a left-hand turn, it's just going to create havoc with the thirty, forty cars sitting there waiting after the game. Another one was, that was the traffic, the Torpie. I'd like to know-
You can use the microphone, too. That's the only way we can record it.
Okay. I'd like to know if the factory in the very back of this property, which is close to the train tracks, do they have a soil test on that? Because I remember years ago, there was that factory there, and then across James Street, there was another factory. That second factory went on fire, and they didn't know what was in there. The fireman here, you might remember that one.
I think we all remember it.
Yeah. I mean, I spent the night in Somerville High School, you know, because we were all sent, we were sent away. They came and knocked on our doors. So, I want to make sure the soil was tested for everybody here, and also, just being nasty, you want this building to last seventy-five years. My house on the corner is over a hundred, so I think they should use stronger stuff than what I have in my house. That's it.
Okay, first of all, you may sit down. I want to address some of your comments. They're going to have to clean up any contamination on that property to the satisfaction of the DEP, and that's, that's actually way above our pay grade. DEP is going to take care of that. So, whatever they have to do, they will do.
Who tells DEP?
What?
Who tells DEP to come look at it?
I still can't hear you.
Who tells the DEP to come look at it?
They have to get permits in order to get building permits.
Yeah.
Have to get DEP permits. So, and they have to test the soil in order to get those permits. And that's, that's all I have to say right now. Anybody else?
Hi, Roberta Carpenat, sixty-six Fairview Avenue. You know, when I was a kid, my father and my mother took their two little girls, my sister and myself, to a nice restaurant. And we got there, and the hostess, in retrospect, she didn't want kids in the dining room. She took us down the stairs to this dark room, and my father said, what is this? And she said, this is our pilgrim room. And my father turned around and said, we're not pilgrims, and we were out of there. With all due respect to the witnesses tonight, we are not Warren and we are not Hillsborough. We are, as Mayor Gallagher says, two and a half square miles of awesome. And a part of that awesome is Fairview Avenue from South Gaston to Haynes Street. Walk along there, you've all been there, you know. It's houses, small little houses like mine, little larger houses. I know Mr. Storms owns some apartment buildings down in the Haynes Street area, but they look like houses. And I'm frankly a little upset when we're talking about neighbors, that I'm overlooked. I'm your closest neighbor. I'm like, your six-foot fence is like right on my driveway, for God's sakes. So, let's get a perspective of what is the built environs. The built environs are houses, small houses, large houses. None of them are fifty feet tall, and none of them are a hundred and sixty-nine thousand square feet. A hundred and sixty-nine thousand square feet. Do you know the White House, excluding the east and west wings, is only fifty-five thousand square feet? This is bigger than three White Houses. I don't oppose redevelopment. I certainly have no problem with the work that the Storms family has done in Somerville. They've done an exemplary job. I have a problem with this development on this property. When you were a kid, your teacher probably gave you a handout. It's a chicken, a cow, a pig, and maybe a car, or maybe an apple, a banana, a cat, and a pear. And then she'd say, circle what doesn't look like everything else. This development does not look like the rest of the street. It does not look like the built environs. And I would just ask all of you, I'm not asking for a show of hands. Well, first of all, I want to thank my neighbors for coming, coming out, especially two new neighbors who've only been in their home about two weeks. But I want to ask all of you, if this property was proposed next to your house, or on your street, or in your immediate neighborhood, would you say yes? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Alex Thorson. I am the neighbor that's been in the house for about two weeks now. My wife, Annie, and I purchased it. We closed at the middle to end of February. I would say we were not aware at all of this development being proposed. I would think that it probably would have had an effect on our decision to buy the house. I will say there are definitely some concerns with it from us. We are coming from Moorestown. We've been living there for the last decade or so. I think this town probably has a lot of similarities, especially what it's going to become in the future. We understand what it's like to be kind of living in a fishbowl, because we were an apartment that was right next to a couple of houses that had, where you would be able to hear within talking distance of people's homes and their backyards. There's definitely some concerns about privacy that we have. Came to Somerville. We love the town. We have the intention of starting a family here. There's some safety concerns, too, that we would have with the streets and how much more crowded they would be with this new development going in. There would be over a hundred new tenants if it's fully filled. The traffic on the streets is another concern for us. It's just the whole quality of life issue that I think would, would be hurting us. So, I do encourage you guys to really think about this and how it would affect us, especially choosing this town to move to to start a good life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I don't think Alex provided his address.
What's your?
Oh, I'm sorry. I am, I'm at fifty-nine Fairview.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Good evening. Dennis Sullivan, eight South Richards Avenue. I'm not a close neighbor, but I'm in the southeast corner, and the southeast part of Somerville has certainly come a long way since the inspection station was on Fairview Avenue. We've been very successful in infill projects. We've been very sensitive to making them all work together. You probably have seen the erection of the Kirby Avenue Village, and I've gotten some good feedback from that, because sure, it's bigger than our houses, but it seems to fit. I don't immediately see this project, but I have neighbors that do. My main concern is the traffic, and I do have a question for Mike. If we had an independent traffic expert evaluate their findings, or did you do it on your own?
I distribute, Mayor, the reports prepared by Karen.
Okay, and that took into effect all of the other projects as well, so a cumulative traffic effect, not just this site?
His traffic study destroyed the intersection towards the east, but his testimony was that it did not adversely impact the intersection to the west. Is that correct, Karen? Is that a correct statement?
We did consider the continued development and the approved project on Kirby Avenue, as much as we were the traffic consultant for that project as well. So, we had that information, and that was embodied within this traffic report. Obviously, it's a permitted use. So, the presumption is that the traffic impacts were taken into consideration when the zoning was created to permit the development of the site as proposed. So, anything related to off-track impacts, we have certainly studied that, taking those other projects into consideration.
Okay, I would, I would ask the board, and I don't know if you can include it as a requirement, but mostly for mayor and council, I had talked last year about the idea of a shuttle bus to accommodate all of the new residents along this track. And right now, we only have several of the projects up and running. But Kirby Village will be up, hopefully by the end of this year, if not early next year. I don't know the timeframe on this one, but within, I would say, two to three years, you'll have a lot of projects from South Bridge Street to Adamsville Road, and I would encourage either planning board or mayor and council to talk to those owners, maybe, you know, collaborate with Ridewise or DOT. Explore the concept of a shuttle bus to at least alleviate some of the possible traffic in the area, because the roads are narrow and there's no way to build any new ones. So, I think that would go a long way toward alleviating, we don't know the traffic now, because the projects are not all complete. But within our lifetime, and hopefully, you know, well beyond that, when Torpies open and all these buildings are open, and East Main Street is busy with hospital traffic, the less cars, the better. And anything you can do as a collective group to make it better, I think it'll go a long way to, you know, helping the residents feel more comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll close the public session. I'm going to start out by saying a few things. First of all, what we did was, we asked the applicants to go back and consider the comments that everybody had made, the comments that this board had made, and I think they made a very real effort to make it a better project. Having said that, I understand what you all are saying, but you also have to understand what the limits of what we can do are. We don't have the choice to say no when everything complies. It's not part of our prerogative. We're not the Board of Adjustment here. The Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial body that can make decisions like that, because people are going to the Board of Adjustment because what they want to do isn't allowed. In this particular case, and Carol, you can jump in anytime you want, in this particular case, what they are proposing is allowed, and I just, you know, I understand your dilemma. Anybody else?
The only thing I'd add, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, if you do just want to go through the board's education, what relief they do need. So, you indicated this is an approved redevelopment plan, which means the use, the density, the height, everything that they're proposing that unfortunately may not be as amenable to the residents as they would like, has already been approved by the governing body of Bydus Borough. So, they're not asking for relief, nor could they ask for relief from either one of those. The plan itself would have to be amended. What they are asking for relief by way of the deviation from this board is the concept of a flat roof, which you heard testimony, is it flat? Is it really flat? What's the actual appearance of the roof they're proposing? Originally, they needed a fence deviation that has been eradicated. The lighting illumination, the testimony was that they believe that they do comply with the minimum, once you take into account the lighting at the right-of-way. But if for some reason, after a as-built illumination test, they don't, they'll do whatever they have to comply. The driveway width, maximum of fifteen feet is permitted. They're proposing twenty, and you heard testimony that that was for fire safety purposes. And the number of driveways, there's a maximum of one. You heard testimony that even though there's two separate access points, it's one entrance and one exit, which constitutes one driveway. The only other one is the concept, the subjective concept of building style and character. And the redevelopment plan says specifically, the character and style of the commercial and residential development shall be consistent with the architectural style found in the borough and surrounding county and complement the existing built environs. That's your guidance. So, that's the relief that you're asking for. Those are the only things you can consider in connection with the testimony and the exhibits that have been provided. Again, I'm certainly not saying the residents don't have good concerns or good points, but legally, you just have to consider those issues based upon the testimony provided. That's what you're limited to do at this point.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, just to kind of go back in time a little bit, the, and I did, at the turn of the year, I had said, we are going to look at all of our redevelopment plans. We are going to look at all of our zoning ordinances, and that process has begun. It's not something that can happen very quickly, but, you know, in the, in the changing face of Somerville, we have to change the playbook that we've been using. Having said that, this is an application that began back in August. It's an ongoing application. I agree with everything that Kara had said. But we also have to go back in time and take a look at, this was a plan that was created by this body at the request of the Borough Council. A number of us sat on this. Dennis, you sat on it. I sat on it, and most of the members of this planning board helped to develop this. More importantly, any redevelopment plan that I have been involved in, we have done with the public, every single one of them. So, this is not a plan that was created by the Borough Council. It wasn't a plan created- It wasn't a plan, plan created by this body. This was a plan created with the public. So, the public drove ultimately what this plan will look like. Having watched the August meeting, the plans that came back, I, I think significantly took into effect or into account a lot of the concerns of the neighbors. And, and, you know, I made a list of them here, but I think Kara, you, you kind of went through those. And, and most, if not all, have been modified according to the public's comments, which I think is extremely important. There was one, which I think the Borough Council will take up, which was the intersection of Lozier and Fairview. And it's a bad intersection to begin with. And that's something that we, the Borough Council, Roger being the council president, and I will bring back to the Borough Council. And I think we need to take a look at James Street as well, the James Street intersection, and begin to look at that. But this is a plan that, that essentially conforms. It conforms in almost every single aspect to what was created by the public. And for us to then turn around and, and, and say no, that becomes very difficult, even in light of what I had said at the turn of the year. 'Cause we do need to look at this. We do need to look at the, the densities we are creating. And I think in the future, you're gonna see more infill and rehabilitation than you will large-scale redevelopment. But, but at this point, I think this project conforms. I think it meets the criteria set forth in the redevelopment plan. And, and I think we have an obligation to, to vote in the affirmative.
Jason?
Yeah. I just, I just wanna say again, to Kara's point, that we only have these few things. So, I just wanna comment on those few things. The flat roof, I don't, I don't have any objection to personally. I think as long as it's hidden, I'd rather all that control equipment be hiding up on the roof than out on the side of the building somewhere controlling the HVAC. So, to that, I'm fine. I, I do appreciate the twenty-foot width, because I do wanna accommodate the emergency services. And I do appreciate that you're moving those EV stations outside, just because a three-hour rating doesn't really help a nine-hour fire. So, with that, you know, I, I, I don't see any of the variances or waivers as an issue from here, from my seat. So, I just wanted to put that out there, those individual things, and that's all, Jeremy.
Okay. Larry?
Yes. I don't think that this is appropriate for the size in this neighborhood. We just heard back and forth about working with the public. My understanding, and maybe somebody can straighten me out about what the truth is, but I was told basically, they had meetings with the public, and then they submitted the other plan. That was disastrous. The architect in the back brought her model in, and we got a chance to see the scale.
I'm not an architect. I don't, I just wanna make that very clear. I am not an architect.
The awesome lady in the back. Were you that? She brought a model in that made it crystal clear that the plan that they submitted after the public said, "Don't do this," they did it. So, now we're patting them on the back, because now they're gonna move the building twenty feet back. Okay. But there could be other ways to do this that would accommodate what the neighbors need, so we don't have people who don't have shade or don't have sunlight two-thirds of the year. I just think that there should be more work to shift that building back, to make it more appropriate for where it is. This rendering on the, on the map, blue-sky rendering, is taking skewed view from a different place than the ones that they sent before, the first plan, where they were taking them, it seemed like behind the houses. That's where they did a perspective on the first rendering. So, they come in, and now they take a different rendering from a different angle, and we're patting them on the back, saying, "Oh, that's great." This is a big building in a, in a small-scale neighborhood. The plans show again. The lady makes another plan, makes another scale model, and it's still big. We can do better. We should be doing better. It should be shifted back. I think for the aesthetic reasons and for the, you know, what are we talking about? The, I'm not even sure if it even qualifies for a C-variance. How is this good for the public? The public that lives across the street is not good for them. The only person that's benefiting from this, the developer. So, I'm, I question even the C-variants on it. I think I'm going to vote no. I'm just giving my opinion for those reasons.
Mr. Chairman?
I think it's a beautiful building, it's just in the wrong spot.
Okay. Kara?
I can just say one more thing. I just wanna make sure everybody understands the concept of a redevelopment plan and the public's involvement. The public was involved at the original stage, when the plan was, when the study was done. After a study is done, then the plan is prepared. That plan is presented on first reading by council. The plan is then brought to this planning board for review input and consistency with its master plan. It goes back to a public hearing before the mayor and council, at which time the public has the ability to make comments and, and review and, and make thoughts and, and potential changes. Then, once that plan is adopted, then the developer comes in and prepares its site plan, presumably as much in accordance with the provisions of that redevelopment plan as possible. That then has also changed, from what I understand, based upon discussions with the public, and that's what's brought us to, to this point. So, I just wanted to, you know, kinda make that clear. There's, there's a two-step process, two pieces of involvement. And even if that plan were to change, this applicant is bound by the original plan, the original redevelopment plan. Just wanna make sure, just from a historical and legal perspective, everybody understands the procedure.
But they're also not preventing, or doing extra, they weren't.
Never. Absolutely not.
So, if they could, do something different.
Yeah. But that's not in our purview to force them to do.
I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm just...
We can't deny it.
Yeah. We can't deny based on that.
I, I certainly understand that. I just gave my opinion.
I just have, I have a question about what we're voting on tonight. Are we voting on preliminary? Or are we voting on preliminary and final? Just preliminary? Okay. So, the, the things that were listed as far as the fees, PSE and G, the hot boxes, generators, the fences...
That'll all come back for final.
They have to come back for final. Okay. That's my one, I just need clarification on that.
So, we need a motion on the floor?
I will move that we approve it.
So, it would be preliminary with those waivers?
With all those.
Yes.
Those deviations. And the conditions that I have is the reduction in the height of the fence to four feet from six feet along James Street. The applicant will comply with all of the comments in Mr. Cole's May fifth, twenty-twenty-four letter, but the testimony that was presented on the record and any conditions imposed by the resolution. Same comment with regard to the fire bureau letters, but for testimony and the conditions, including the applicant has agreed to place all EV charging and parking spaces outside. If, this may be part of final, but I do wanna get that in there. If New Jersey American Water says that the loop system is acceptable and the fire department wants it, the applicant will either provide the loop system or come back before the court at final. The areas on the architectural plans referenced as studies will be relabeled as storage areas. Post-construction lighting evaluation regarding the illumination compliance will be completed, and if there's any violation, the applicant will rectify it. And then our standards, such as satisfactory, SIA, D.C. first approvals, can be placed into this room, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. Chairman? Can I? Mr. Chairman? Can I ask a question? So, the, the application was, was filed requesting both preliminary and final site plan approval. You know, certainly, the applicant would prefer, it has to be, it be considered by the board that both preliminary and final approval be granted, however, subject to all the, all the conditions of approval that certainly the Kara appropriately stated, and certainly would need to be met by, by the applicant.
We made a decision about a year and a half ago not to grant preliminary and final at the same time. And we were, the reason was, we were getting a lot of pushback from applicants, and things just weren't working out. So, it has nothing to do with your particular application. We just don't do that anymore.
It saves a lot of bad feeling later on.
So, we got a motion and a second? Who seconded?
I did.
Okay. And Jenna, we have a full board tonight, so the applicants don't, the alternates don't vote.
Correct. Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rosinski?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilman Vroom?
Yes.
Ms. Siderk?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kraska?
Yes.
Mr. Crestes?
Reluctantly, yes.
And Mr. Cleveland?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I will keep my comments very brief. The lawsuit with the public suing the borough for the gun store going in...
Move we, move we.
The lawsuit has been dismissed. So, that frees us up to talk about that issue. And we'll begin discussions about it at the next meeting. And, and part of what I wanna talk about is some, getting us some education about the process, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding floating around. And we need to know all the facts. So, that's it. At this time, I'll open the meeting up to the public for a comment on things other than this application. Hearing no public comment, we'll close the public session. Motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's opposed?